Minute. And then we'll be ready to. What? All right, well, we'll get started. February first, planning commission meeting, 2023. And we start with pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Higgins, would you lead us?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Place your right hand over your heart. Plead after me.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. If you wish to address the planning commission during the meeting, please complete a speaker's form and return it to the commission assistant prior to beginning of the meeting. So we'll give you a chance if anyone still wants to turn in a form. Can we get a roll call?
Chair Algauer. Vice Chair Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Chester.
Here.
Commissioner Higginson.
Here.
Commissioner Snodgrass.
Here.
And Commissioner Vick.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comment?
We do have one public speaker slip for items on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Miskin on Ivy Avenue. I came really here just to apologize to all of you. I made some comments in the last meeting that resulted from some frustration with the city council. And my purpose here is to apologize to each one of you, to the city staff. And Tony, your chastising, your chastening was well taken. So, so thank you for that, and I apologize to all of you. The other thing was, is I've got to run to the hospital. One of the neighbors had a heart attack, so I'm headed up there right now to Loma Linda. But I just wanted to say that this, what's on the agenda today follows the general plan. I'm fully supportive of it, provided that it meets all the requirements of the ordinances. So I, I certainly don't have any problem with that. Last meeting, there was some discussion about the general plan. A comment was made that the general plan is a living document. That's really not the case. The living, the, the general plan doesn't really change. The city allows for four changes per year. But those should be rare indeed and be based on what, you know, what is the real benefit to the community. There's been a lot of discussion about RENA, the numbers that we're all required to get. Virtually, I'm not sure there's a single city in the entire state of California that's even on the road to achieving any of those numbers. We have a certified general plan. There's no reason to change it unless there's a real good reason to change it. This proposal tonight abides by the general plan, so I support it. We've seen in the past that there have been a number of plans brought forward, which, which double, triple the actual number of the dwelling unit density. And we're absolutely opposed to that. So I just again, wanted to apologize to each and every one of you and express my support and grateful for your service to our city. And I need to get to the hospital, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miskin, before you leave, I just want you to know that thank you from me. And I don't know the neighbor, but I've probably met them. You don't need to tell us the name, but tell them that I'll be praying for the situation. I hate to, I hate to hear that.
Know that they're, they live in one of the trailer parks here, so you may not know them, but.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, but I will let them know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And there's no more public comments. Okay. So we'll move on to approval of minutes from last meeting and consent agenda.
I just have one question, and it's a nerdy thing. But is there a distinction without a difference between abstaining and recusing? Did I say that right?
Yes, there is a difference. So with abstention, it's voluntary usually, so you're allowed to abstain, but you don't have to. When you talk about recusal, usually that's because there's some sort of conflict of interest. And under those circumstances, you're required to state the nature of the conflict and then remove yourself from the room during the discussion.
I'll clarify what I'm trying to say. The, the minutes indicate that we abstained from our individual items when in fact we recused. Should that be corrected in the minutes?
So it's my understanding you were noted as being absent?
No?
But that has to do with how the minutes, how you're able to actually write down the existing four minutes? I think right now, under the existing form, it's, the recusal designation is not an option. So it's noted as absent. From the actual vote. So absent from the vote only.
It does call out, though, on the minutes on page four, that you were recused on that item.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll second.
Motion and second, can we get a vote? All those who in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And so we'll move to the, I think it's the first and only item tonight. And this is Christian, correct? Nope, Christians.
I'll be handling that, Vice Chair Hicks.
Sorry, Madeline, I should read.
And to confirm, you are opening the public hearing, correct?
Opening the public hearing.
So the applicant Everett Homes LLC has submitted case number 22-127, which is a conditional use permit and architectural review to allow for the construction of 11 duplex units, which would total 22 multifamily units, each, which would provide a total square footage of 2,173 square feet on a property that is 2.72 acres and east of Fourth Street and the private street, Noli Court. For some additional context, I have the city's general plan land use map before you on the screen and have highlighted the subject parcel with the red star icon. The property is vacant and is zoned RM 10M and is generally surrounded by other RM 10M land use district properties. Those are the orange parcels. In particular, I also want to highlight a project that is currently under construction across the street on the opposite side of Fourth Street, west of the subject site, and that's Stone Brook Meadows, which at ultimate buildout would provide 57 condominiums. Additionally, as clear by the, the situation of this parcel, it's, it's landlocked, so access will be provided by an extension of an existing ingress egress access easement from the adjacent parcel connecting to Fourth Street. The site plan is presented on the screen and shows the 22 units, which are in 11 duplex structures that are configured around a private internal loop drive network connecting from the existing Noli Court. Four units are within the central island area of this central loop neck, drive network. And there are four duplexes to the north, four to the south, and then one at the, one at the rear. Additionally, there are two landscaped detention basins at the entrance to the site, and these basins will help maintain historic runoff flows and comply with water quality management requirements by the city. The floor plan is on the screen and again, shows that 2,173 total square footage of these units, which are one story and ultimately would provide three bedrooms and two bathrooms for each unit. And additionally, there is a 400 square foot garage attached, complying with our multifamily design guidelines and development code. Unit amenities will include oversized closets, automatic dishwasher, an automatic garage door, and a deadbolt and peephole on each front door of the unit. Some key elements for a typical unit configuration include individual trash bin storage, a 1,000 square feet of private open space per unit, which surpasses the minimum requirement by the Ucaipa Development Code, vinyl yard fencing for the creation of some more private yard spaces, and then garage and driveway parking for each unit. There are two different architectural styles proposed for this. And the first one is inspired by a French influence and is 18 feet tall at that one story structure. And some key elements include stone accents in the gable elements, white wood knee braces and accent corbels. And the second architectural plan is more of a Spanish influence, again, 18 feet tall as well, and has key elements including dark brown tile roofing, stucco, clay pipe fence, and then soft arch features enhancing the unit entryways, which are, you know, inspired by Spanish influence. And then the conceptual landscaping has also been submitted at this time. But as a standard condition of approval would ultimately be reviewed by our city's contract landscape architect for compliance with water efficiency landscape ordinance requirements. But I do want to highlight some attention to detail towards the front of the site and the landscaped detention basins with some more decorative trees, such as desert willow and crepe myrtle to kind of enhance that focal point at the front of the site. Here's a site photo. And then another site photo. Then as standard noticing requirements, project notices were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius and no comments were received. And then this project would be subject to a Class 32 categorical exemption as it complies with the four required findings for this exemption. From a fiscal impact perspective, the project would generate almost $400,000 in development impact fees, which is based on a total of 22 units on the 2.72 acre parcel. And so this is a contribution to the city's fair share infrastructure improvements program. So it's staff's recommendation, as the project is compliant with the RM 10M land use district, that the conditional use permit is approved with recommendations A through D on the screen.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Madeline, for the presentation. Vice Chair Hicks, it's nice to see you again. And fellow members of the commission, welcome. First time I think I've met many of you, so appreciate you guys being here, and we appreciate the work that you do here at the city. My name's Dan Haskins. I'm a principal of land engineering consultants. We're the engineering and survey representatives for this project. And we can read through the conditions. We concur with all of them. And we worked with city staff to work out a few of the little kinks to improve the design of the project. It is a unique project. It's got a little looping road and things, but we've tried to enhance it with elements that would help it make it look bigger than it probably actually is. But it does provide needed units in the city and 22 on a small parcel. So we appreciate the ability to bring this to the city, and we're recommending approval, obviously. And if you have any questions at all, I'm here to answer any of them.
I have a question about section EE for the storm chamber. I wanted to know if there's been any percolation tests on the storm water retention chamber? And what's that capacity? What are the percolation rates?
Well, we've got current percolating rates on the property just adjacent to it. We did the Magnolia Gardens project. And the rates were limited. We, we ended up with passable rates. This is an area in the mesa that's got some clayish materials. But it does free up at depth. And we've noticed from previous borings on the other property that it's a little tight at the top. But when we get into depths of nine to 15 feet, it does loosen up and we get good flow rates. We're anticipating, this is the same type of soil in the same area, within just a few hundred feet of it, so we're anticipating the same. But at this point, we're, we still need to conclude the borings, but we're confident that will be like borings, as evidenced by the adjacent 15 acre parcel that was done with multiple borings.
And do you think that storm chamber will, will it meet capacity if a storm comes through? Will it affect the current residents?
Absolutely. LEC will not design anything unless we design it to meet the 100-year queue, the 25-year queue, and the 10-year queue. We will design the capacity of it, even if we have to put chambers underground, to be less than historical flow. We don't want to increase any flows on downstream property. That would just be a risk to my business, going to risk to the city, as well as a risk to the residents. So this site will be designed adequately to, for all of the prescribed storms to be less than the existing condition today.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that answers your question.
Please.
I've got a quick question on, on the retention basin also. I think it shows the depth of that is about three to four feet. Is there going to be a fence completely around that?
Yeah, I believe it's shown on the plan.
I saw vinyl fence on the one side near the residence.
There's the perimeter fence on the site plan that goes all the way around. And then there's a fence between the house and the retention basin. And it'll be fronted here east-west to enclose it. And then there will be an access gate into it for maintenance.
Okay.
And it'll replicate the same thing to the south.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be protected. The kids won't be able to get in there. But we, we understand the, the safety features from drowning and things. We want to make sure that's a secured lock site, only accessible by maintenance people.
Okay.
So the design of the basins was based on a hydrology report from a adjacent development that you're doing?
Well, we did a preliminary drainage analysis for typical scenarios that the city of Ucaipa requires. And so we ran a basically what they call a CIA approach for, for queues. We took those queues and sized the basins accordingly. Because this is a preliminary development, all of the final design elements would be done as a part of the final engineering, a final drainage study, a final water quality management plan. All of the calculations for the pre and post hydrology and hydraulics would be provided to the city engineer for approval, but with a goal in mind of what I had stated before. Each storm will be taken, conveyed to the basin. It'll be treated for water quality, but it'll also handle the mitigation for increased runoff. So we'll stage it all in there, and less queue will leave the site than what currently exists over, over land flow today.
Okay, so prepared to make the adjustments if the hydrology comes back with a lower perk rate?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's what we have to do. In fact, many cities now, you can do your preliminary, but they come, they make us come back out after the basin is constructed and do final testing prior to C of Os for homes. Because the construction process by different companies can, can take on a different role. They may get heavy equipment in there and compact the soil, where in fact, the goal is to keep the equipment off. But you have to have lighter, so what we do for these small sites, we use light equipment, small dozers, to maintain and get the dirt out of it. And then prior to finalizing it, we rip the entire bottom. And that will continue on a maintenance cycle as required by the water quality element. I mean, in order for this to be a long-term water quality device, maintenance has to be done on the slopes, and the bottom has to be ripped to keep it loose. And so that's going to happen basically on an annual basis.
Right, yeah. Moving dirt's what I do for a living, so.
Yeah, you probably understand what I'm talking about then.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we just can't tighten up the bottom of those basins. They have to be left loose.
I've seen per design them having gravels or even 96-inch percula, perforated chambers for volume requirements of potential water buildup on site.
These will 100% likely be storage chambers underneath the basin. That was the same design we had to do next door for Magnolia Gardens. So that helped us with the water quality to keep it subsurface and allows that 48-hour percolation of the ground, you know, below the surface, so we don't have any vector control issues.
And then volume for the 100-year?
Oh, yeah, the volume will take into account the design capture volume, as well as the increased runoff volumes. And that'll be mitigated and conveyed through detention. So the retained volume will stay underground through the design capture volume requirement by the WQMP. Landon knows what I'm talking about here.
Thank you, sir.
Did I address that okay?
Okay. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just have one question left.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, because while you were talking, you answered the other two that I had anyway. So, and this is just because I lived in a duplex once, and since there's more people in this particular complex to keep neighbors not hating each other, is there enough insulation between those common walls so you can't hear each other?
There's a two-inch air gap, so there's no connection of the walls between the, the units.
Well, there isn't.
Yeah, I don't do common wall duplexes. That's not smart. We don't want to hear that guy fighting, don't want banging on the walls, so there's a two-inch air gap between these units. The roof connect, roofs are connected, the foundations are connected, but the walls are not. Been there, done that. Forty-seven years. That's all I've ever done.
Commissioner Higgins?
I'm on, okay. I went by, I think it's a good infill project, I think, for this area. I think it fits with the general plan very well. I think it's going to be a very nice complex. I appreciate the single story, the size of the units, because I think you could have maximized it more. So I think it's a well-thought-out project. I look at it from an architect's standpoint. I, I think there was a question I had, because the private road leading into the complex is rather stark. I know you extended the sidewalk parkway, I think, along the south side of the street or that private drive. Has there been consideration maybe to extend that? Because there is a sidewalk along Fourth Street. And did you run into any maybe pushback from the property owner? I know there was an easement grant. So that was a question I had, because I see this being a family complex too. And I don't know, you know, I don't know if people go bus stops anymore, pick up kids. But just looking at it from an enhancement leading into this complex, was there any consideration given to maybe aesthetically treating that entryway a little bit more?
Yeah, in fact, we've spoken with the owner developer, and we're agreeable with adding a condition that we provide landscaping. Why it didn't get on the plan, I apologize, but it was conveyed to the owner that we would need to enhance the landscaping. And he's all about a beautification of the entry from fourth. Now, we can't fully control what the apartment owner will do, but we will ask him that to get permission to extend sidewalk all the way to Fourth Street, so that any students walking to pick up a bus would be able to do that. But we agree that we would need to do parkway landscaping through there. And we would offer that to the Noli Court apartment complex also. So we're happy if the planning department wants to add a condition that for the, at least the area we control within our easement, that we enhance it with parkway landscaping and make sure that the addition of the sidewalk, which I believe is proposed.
Well, I, I think I saw it on the plan. It looks like it stopped that first driveway for that southerly apartment unit. So I wasn't sure if it's, I mean, I looked at it and, and I don't know, I can look at plans all day long, but sometimes I miss a note. So I just wanted to ask the question, and I appreciate you considering that as part of this. Because again, I think it's a very nice project.
Yeah, we, we are also agreeable to condition that the sidewalk connect to Fourth Street.
Okay.
I think that, David, it's a very good comment, and we appreciate it. And I think it needs to be added to the project. Because this will be a family-oriented place, and they need to have safe, simple, hard surface conveyance to Fourth Street.
Absolutely. And again, I know it's kind of a, you know, puts it on the project, but I don't think it's a lot more sidewalk and a little bit more investment into that community, I think would make, make it more welcoming. The only other comment I had was, obviously you have two schemes. I think the architecture is fine. Have you considered maybe doing another color scheme? And I guess I think about 22 units, and you've got one unit white, one unit tan. One unit white, one unit tan. I think because the size of the unit and the individuality of the, the structures as a neighborhood, I don't know if introducing one additional color scheme, the architecture is fine, I think maybe just suggesting one or two other color schemes might be more attractive to potential buyers. That's just my opinion.
No, we, we appreciate that. Typically on a 22-unit, I mean, like with Magnolia Gardens, we had 103 different schemes.
Okay.
They were approved, and they were quite detailed. Ben beat us up pretty good, and we had to agree with everything he wanted. But with this one, they chose two, and we weren't the team that put together the architecture. But certainly, we're happy to work with you guys if you want to tone up, tone down, change the colors a little bit. We can do that as a part of the final architectural construction document.
And that's fine. I, I think the colors were fine. I think maybe just having a third, but that's just my opinion again. An architect, so I look at things like that.
Well, and we appreciate that. And so we're always going to appreciate your comments.
Okay.
And so when you get us a middle pack and you got a question, feel free to call us.
I will.
We got time, you know, we're, it's all AutoCAD now, right?
It's all okay, we change things overnight, apparently, I don't know.
Well, sometimes you have to do.
Doesn't always work that way, so.
So we appreciate it, David.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? And was that noted for the condition change?
We could add, as part of the motion, if the planning commission wants to add a condition number 82, which would be under the engineering conditions related to the sidewalk extension to Fourth Street.
As well as the landscape extension.
Landscape improvement.
Yeah, we're fully in agreement with that. Any other questions?
Any other questions? I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, so we'll open it up to public comment, I guess. Do we have any?
No public comments, speaker slips on this item.
Okay.
Are we ready to move it?
Pardon me?
Are we ready to move?
Well, let's, any, any questions for staff? No? No? Okay, please.
I, I think it's, it's, it's a nice project. It's, it's really respectful for the neighborhood around there, and it's really responsible compared to the big one in the last meeting that got dumped on the city there, so, in that neighborhood. So I just want to thank you for bringing a nice project like that, size-wise and, and everything, so.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion then?
Formally, you'll have to close the public hearing, and then you can do the motion.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. My first time, guys, sorry.
I, I would like to move the project with the changes that was, that were mentioned with the sidewalk and the architectural, another, a third. And there was one more. Oh, they are, the landscaping that was discussed.
Yeah, so the landscaping and, and sidewalk will be condition number 82, and then we can add a condition related to the, the, the design for additional enhancement for that.
I would second that.
All right, can we get a vote on it? And you want to do a roll call on it? Or do we need to?
Vice Chair Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chester?
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson?
Yes.
Commissioner Snodgrass?
Yes.
Commissioner Vick?
Yes.
Chair Algauer. Thank you.
Well, I guess that's it for the night then.
So the, we do have one study session, since we do have a majority of new members. I'm going to be kind of doing a few different study activities on some of the lighter meetings, just so that, trying to get everyone caught up to speed on that. You guys all have different backgrounds and experiences. And so really just trying to help provide you guys with the tools on these new projects. And so I'm going to kind of do this, it's kind of a planning 101, or kind of very high level, and just some information on helpful tips for planning commissioners. And then if you have questions through the, the presentation, feel free to ask me. I'm happy to, to go into that, but. Really, so this is kind of a planning 101, training for commissioners that I've created. And the first thing is, well, why do we plan in the first place? Well, cities themselves or civilizations have kind of thought about how land is used and how to be efficient about it. You know, think about grid, you know, development as part of the ancient Roman area. You know, the fortresses that were built during the medieval period. All those were part of how the resource of the land was to support that, that community, that civilization. And so really, it's, you know, we have land, we have uses, we have activities, and how do we manage it? And then certainly, you know, modern day, during the industrial revolution, you had these factories coming up, you have this heavy industry, and it really became, okay, how do we protect people? How do we protect activity in a way that makes sense? And so the modern day planning really kind of arose from that. And then like the Garden City Movement and other stuff was, you know, how do we make places that people want to live and that's safe for them? And so that really is it. Really, planning is about creating the goals and policies of managing that growth and development, looking at, you know, what are the issues of, of needs? You know, environmental concerns and areas of growth that, you know, can support that. And then really, at the end of the day, it's, land is finite, resources are finite. And so how do we best allocate the growth of a community to capture what we have and what we don't have? Now, in terms of land use planning, it kind of follows this. Everything's born in the United States from the US Constitution, and then going down from federal law all the way down to the city's general plan and then specific plans and local codes. And so it kind of is from that laws. And then certainly, public input and court decisions also play a role in the framework of how these all interlace together in that development. And then really, in the city's realm, we have kind of two different elements of, of planning. One is kind of the regulation or the, the regulatory scheme of what's allowed. That includes like our general plan, the blueprint for the, the city, two design standards, the development code. And then the other side of it, which is the actual approvals for new development and land uses. And so that includes like the conditional use permits and tentative maps for residential subdivisions. Now, one of the key themes at the city level, really, kind of the, the. Now, one of the key themes at the city level, really kind of the guiding light for the city is the general plan itself. And so, it's the blueprint over a longer horizon, and really creates the basis for the decisions that a city does. So, in terms of the planning commission, you know, a lot of this is born from the policies there, but even other fundamental stuff, safety element, you know, for police resources, fire resources, those are also tied into the general plan and really giving kind of, what are we trying to achieve in the community and making sure that we're doing actions that are consistent with it? And then it's formatted with kind of a goals, policies, and implementation action. So, it goes from kind of a high lofty vision to what are actual tangible steps that the city should be doing to implement it. I do want to note, it is a living document. Really, the general plan is meant to address the city's vision and goals. And so, updates do occur from time to time to make sure that we're meeting that trajectory and meeting those needs, looking at, you know, where do we need to be? What issues, what is changing in the world that maybe we need to address? However, there's also kind of the opposite side of that, which is, you know, carte blanche changes to the general plan also usually indicates a bigger concern of, okay, where are we as a policy level falling short? And maybe a more tailored, comprehensive update may be necessary to capture, you know, those issues. And so, general plans usually go through, you know, more comprehensive updates, but then they'll also go through kind of more targeted updates as well, if they're kind of seeing, okay, the market has shifted in this direction or the environment that our community is in is in a different spot. And so, how do we best make sure that it's reflective of what we're trying to do? And then, as part of the implementation of the general plan, we have different tools that are used. The most common one is our city's zoning code. It establishes kind of the uses that are allowed, and then just standard metrics for development. And then also includes in the city's development code, the process for development. So, it lists out what, you know, review process is required, who's the approval authority for that, and the steps, and the notification requirements. And so, that's tailored from that as well. Specific plans are kind of like a focused general plan at a very level. It's looking at a more regional or kind of sub-area of the city and going, okay, how do we, rather than just the zoning code, how do we really capture what our needs are for that area? And also includes a little bit more information about the implementation of infrastructure, financing, other details to really go, this section of the community, we want to take a little bit more of a hard look at. An example for the city is the Uptown Business District specific plan includes a lot more tailored provisions for this environment. It's gonna be different than other commercial corridors in the city, so we want to make sure we achieve this goal. And then other specific plans include the Oakland Creek specific plan, which covered the Wilson Three Basin, really facilitating the change of the surplus land from flood control district, and really providing those mechanisms in a way that wouldn't be something spelled out in the zoning code, because it doesn't go into that detail or that nuance of a project area. And then the last one is design guidelines, really going into providing an expectation for what projects could look like, or at least what the level of detail that the city wants to see. You know, you can have a use that's designed one way, but the details make a big difference as well. And so, it carries through that. And then certainly, on the residential side, you have objective design standards that are much more, you know, you either meet it or you don't. And so, it creates that specificity. And then kind of from there, the implementation is really comes down to the project. So, we can have a plan, but if no one's doing anything towards the plan, then you're not gonna get much traction with it. And so, really is the subdivisions for residential projects, site plan reviews, such as conditional use permits. And basically, all that is being built is part of the implementation. And so, as our collective role, so both the planning commission and city staff is trying to make sure that that seats up within the framework of the city. So, the new development that comes through, making sure it's following with the zoning code, the development code, you know, design guidelines, and then the general plan. And part of it is, you know, not every decision or every project requires planning commission review, but you guys are a very key and integral part towards meeting that vision. You guys are, been selected by city council for a purpose, and it's to you guys providing your own perspective, that in-depth analysis of projects to say, hey, are we hitting the goals? Or is there little tweaks that projects need to, in order to make sure that we're meeting that long-term community vision? Now, one thing that is, you know, we do a lot on the staff side behind the scenes. And so, really, how do projects reach the planning commission? And so, I have kind of a list that kind of goes, and you kind of follow along here. But everything starts with kind of a counter discussion. An idea property owner has for a site, and what can I do? I want to try and meet this. And then really, it starts going through this review process of, you know, we're checking the compliance with the code, we're looking at their submittal, making sure that the information that we need to assess the project and that you guys would need to assess the project is there. And then ultimately, it ends with preparing the staff report, draft conditions of approval, and then ultimately, bringing it for a public hearing for the planning commission's decision. Now, as for the review process, we do, as I mentioned, a lot kind of behind the scenes. And so, we're looking first and foremost, general plan and development code consistency. Does this fit within the rules? Looking at site design constraints or opportunities, going, hey, you have this feature on site, try to use it, maybe that'll create more value for it, or make the project more affordable to develop, or something that can be better leverage. Assessing certainly an environmental impact, making sure we're not creating an impact on the environment that could be mitigated. And then from there, we're kind of developing the permit requirement. So, we have standard conditions of approval, and then more project-specific conditions that get added in. And then also working with applicant on kind of, you know, pressing, what has the commission liked in the past or hasn't liked in the past? And what has been successful or unsuccessful in development? And so, the, the previous slide kind of shows this kind of breakdown of, you know, this kind of task of the next steps that go through this process before a project reaches you guys. But it's not always very linear. Sometimes it's a, hey, one change, we need to go back to the drawing board, or maybe we need to do this, or maybe there's this other opportunity, or something that changes. And so, it's a lot of iterations between staff, the developer, their team. Maybe they learn something through the design process, that they go, okay, this is a fatal flaw. We gotta, we gotta try and work through this. And so, it is a lot of collaboration on trying to get stuff that will ultimately work and be best for the community. And so, the planning commission's role, really, you guys are, as I mentioned, the decision maker. So, your steps is really, you know, when, you know, the week before the meeting, you guys review the staff report, see what staff's recommendations are. And then at the meeting, you're listening to the applicant, their presentation as well, seeing what their goals are for the property. You're gonna hear the testimony from those that are interested in the project. Are they supportive of it? Are they concerned with it? What are those concerns? And then it's, you know, being an active listener, participating, you know, both in what they're saying, but what your collective commission is saying. And then also focusing on the big picture is, you know, what does this do overall for the community? And is that a positive? Making sure that conditions of approval meet the project needs as well. And then certainly, the last part is making a decision on the project that's informed and documenting that process that you guys have. And so, that's a big part of it, is making sure findings are provided for or against the project. Findings themselves, they are the written statement of facts of how a project, or explaining how and why a particular decision is made. It's required for any of the development type projects, so tentative maps or conditional use permits, stuff like that, where it's a little bit less policy, but more just the details of a project does require approval of findings. And really, the way I think of it is, think of the word because. So, I am approving this project because, and the findings are set up in that way. So, it isn't just, I like it, I don't like it, but it's much more detail of, you know, access is provided through this, it meets these requirements. And so, a lot of it is through these applications and the staff reports, we will provide a recommendation and draft findings for the planning commission. And so, it provides our input from what we have from the evidence. And then certainly, you know, as part of it, you guys are the ones that ultimately are making the findings. And so, if you disagree, it's really about making the reasons clear why, and providing, you know, direction on those issues. And then also making sure that collectively, everyone's focusing on the big picture and tangible elements in the planning tools as well. So, making sure that if you're supporting a project or against a project, those findings reflect, you know, tangible evidence and relate to the project in its form. Another part of the project review, in addition to the findings, is a condition of approval. So, is the project we're gonna allow to be built? And these are the rules that, as it gets built, that they need to adhere to. We do collect the conditions from other departments and other agencies as appropriate. And really, it's the measurable elements that pertain to the project and its stages. So, our conditions are set up ongoing prior to grading permit, prior to building permit, and then prior to certificate of occupancy, so that as they're going through the different stages of construction, those expectations are reasonable. We do have, and this is part of the city's kind of constitutional power, is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare. And so, these conditions are kind of that check for if it's a use, let's say noise is a concern, there may be some mitigation measures of the time that noise is allowed to happen, or something like that. And so, that's related to those components. And then really, this is part of it, you know, if there's a project where you're like, hey, I'm not sure if I can meet the findings, but maybe this mitigation measure will get it there or address the big concern that's there, then that is something that you guys have a tool to help meet those findings and say, hey, we're now able to meet it because they've done this, this, and this. Final considerations is making sure that the conditions do relate to the project and serve a legitimate purpose. And then there's two kind of key Supreme Court rulings, Nolan and Dolan, is really coming down to, does a condition have a nexus to the project? Is the impact that they're creating, you know, does it relate to that impact? And then also, is the mitigation roughly proportional to that impact? So, are we making them mitigate for stuff that's issues that some other projects have all done? And it's like, now this is gonna be your burden? Then the Supreme Court has rule, well, that's not necessarily fair. But making sure as we craft conditions that it, there's the appropriate connection to those conditions. And then kind of last, that I'm gonna kind of leave with you guys, is different key tips for commissions. So, there's five different points here that I've kind of co-adopted from leader California cities. One is honor relationship between staff and each other, conduct effective meetings, hold everyone accountable, develop a sense of team. You guys are all here volunteers, so, you know, it's, you know, some projects are easy, some are not. And it's kind of like, we're all in this together, and we're all trying to do the best. And so, that's, I think, a valuable element. And then certainly, another component is, you know, continue to learn and grow.
And so, kind of. Ben, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Beck's, back one. Number four, how do we develop a sense of a team without violating the Brown Act?
So, it's not necessarily you guys are gonna go hang out, but just more, I think, as you guys are working together. You know, I think it's just as you guys interact with each other or talk about projects, you know, making sure that you guys are, and it kind of dovetails into, number one, is kind of that sense of respect, you know, you know, the recognition that you guys are all here voluntarily, you guys are all trying to do your best. You guys come from many different backgrounds, many different perspectives of different projects. And so, no perspective is wrong or right. You guys are all just trying to do the best. And so, I think just taking solace in that, the fact that you guys are all here under the same conditions. And so, it's important to just kind of remember that we're all human. And so, I think that's an important message. Now, trying to honor relationships, kind of three different sides to it. You know, certainly, again, with each other, is you guys can respectfully disagree, but you can agree without being disagreeable. So, it really is, you know, hey, you know, hey, you're wrong, or I don't like what you're doing, you don't know what you're talking about. It's more just like, hey, this is my kind of thoughts, and just making sure you guys are being respectful. And then also, key elements, you know, leave disagreements on the dais. You know, the discussion you guys do is about policy and reviewing land use. It's not personal stuff, you know, it isn't meant to be that way. Some projects certainly get more heated, and with contention in the public, can translate to just how the environment is. But, you know, always trying to remember, you guys, again, are here to work together and, you know, make that and be respectful. You know, it's helpful to be a good relationship with staff, recognize we're providing a recommendation for you guys. You know, don't try to blindside us, you know, ask ahead so we can make sure that the applicant's prepared or we're prepared. Really, we want to make sure that, as we're the collective face for the city, that we're doing the best and being honorable for that. And then really also recognizing that, you know, we can't read minds, and so, help us meet those needs as well. And then, you know, council did select you guys, they appointed you guys, they had a lot of different applications. And so, really recognizing that you guys are providing that perspective, and you guys are helping us administer the general plan in those projects. And then for everyone else, is make sure you're being respectful, you know, that you guys are the face. Fairness, consistency, and transparency are really key qualities, you know, making sure that we're not, you know, favoring one person or another. And then one thing that's always, I think, kind of important, especially when it comes to certain types of projects, is just beware of discussions, especially from public comments, that kind of become more discriminatory in nature. So, if it's like, those people, or, you know, this type of development's not bringing the riffraff or something like that, is be mindful of some of those implications. And usually, it's not under, whether intentional or not, maybe, you know, very fair for the applicant or the people that would be impacted by that project. And so, for the effective meeting is, again, being respectful. Remember that these issues are not personalized, it's more about being thoughtful. Be civil and active decorum, and then again, you know, be transparent as well. So, the Brown Act is a key element of that, but it's making sure that when you guys are reviewing projects, you know, the worsening, and certainly, people will come away with this, is that, you know, this is, you know, backdoor kind of dealing. It's like, we want to make sure that we're being honest, we're providing the best foot forward. And then that way, the public that's in the audience also can see that, okay, these people are taking their job seriously and trying to do things fairly. And that does come about. Now, not all meetings are happy, not all meetings are easy. And so, why are they sometimes are? Well, it's not hard, or not easy for the public. Sometimes, many of them are not used to public speaking, so going up to the microphone, talking to a whole crowd of people can one, be intimidating. Two, they're very invested in their issue. It's usually not a matter of just like, this is my musings of development, but this is my next-door neighbor, or this is happening. I'm concerned about what's happening to me as a result of this. And so, their perspective is gonna be much more personalized than kind of the bigger picture. And sometimes it's unsure of the planning process and roles and those preconceived notions. So, as, you know, this is a done deal, or even more importantly, you know, hey, this is, you know, this is just the way it's gonna be, my voice doesn't matter. And it's a lot of, you know, how does a project come through? And so, that's usually a key element that kind of comes through too. And then certainly, public trust, you know, with that is, you know, if there's a lot of, you know, you know, in the political realm, a lot of issues, then that sometimes translates to what people view, what the planning commission's doing, whether or not that's, you know, right or not. But just something to keep in mind. But it's also important, because it does provide that due process, so their thoughts can be heard. And they also get to hear the applicant as well. So, sometimes they get to learn, what is the applicant trying to do? Maybe the first time that they've heard, okay, this is what their vision is for the project. And so, they're taking it at, you know, just a project notice, this is what it says we're going to do, but can't put the face behind what is being proposed. Stuff we do as a city to try and help kind of mitigate some of these issues is we do try to get feedback early through our city's project notice. So, as soon as a project's deemed complete, we're reviewing it through the departments. The neighbors are also getting a notice as well. So, we try to, rather than wait till you guys are ready to make a decision for people to show up and say, this is a concern I have. We try to get that early on, so we can at least, if it's something that we can address, we want to make sure that we do that early in the process, rather than at the dais, because it's a lot easier to do it at the front end, and then that way, it's been worked through. And part of it is, you can also see, if you get a notice, and you see what the project changes are, then you go, okay, the applicant has also responded to this. And so, that usually gives a little bit more of a more comfort level for everyone involved. Now, as part of that, certainly, one thing to keep in mind is, not every person in attendance represents the entire viewpoint of the community. People don't always show up if they're indifferent to a project, or even if they're supportive of a project, they usually won't tell you that. They're not gonna show up in a, you know, a big, heavy mob to say, we love this project, approve it. It's usually the opposite. And so, keeping that perspective in mind, these concerns may be valid, but it may not necessarily be reflective of the entire body. And then also, things to keep in mind is, you know, based on the findings is, you know, can we actually deny it, or does it meet those required findings? And then also consider kind of opportunities that may address those issues. So, we can't say no to the project, but maybe if this is the thread of concern among their general discontentment, maybe that's the way we can do, at least to provide a reasonable solution on it. And then at the end of the day, remember, everyone has opinions, as they say, about opinions. Everyone has one. And so, not everyone's gonna be happy with what you do. And that's just part of, I think, making a decision is, yeah, people will criticize, and, you know, you'll see it, and that's, yep, that's, that's life. All right. And then kind of the last, kind of final tips is, one, there's no bid book of planning, there's no right answer. It is complicated, issues can be nuanced. It comes down to, you know, what is the type of development? What are the constraints that the property owner is having to deal with? Some stuff is even just perspectives of density is, you know, when we... Some stuff is even just perspectives of density is, you know, when we, and one of the things that's a fun exercise I like to see is for residential projects is people see the density number and they go, this is going to be this. So if it's a certain number, it's bad. If it's not a certain number, it's going to be fine. And the reality is, is if there's tests and different architects have done kind of a density test, guess the density. A lot of it is, people would be surprised, density is just merely a number and it's everything else that actually makes the difference. And so something to keep in mind as well is things, is all the nuances of project really make the difference, not just a single aspect of it. And so that's something to be there. And then also be aware of kind of the analysis paralysis where you kind of go so far into the details that you kind of lose sight of, you know, the force through the trees. Another kind of element is everyone has a right to petition. So if a project comes in that we say, yeah, that's not a good idea, doesn't mean that they can't submit it. And so sometimes that's just what it is, that we do try to provide input on the process or say, hey, this is not going to be well-supported, but anyone can submit any project that they want, whether or not it's going to be approved. Another kind of thing, especially kind of the public, kind of realm and the public trust is remember that your microphones are on, your presence on the dais is being recorded. So that also includes if you do like sidebar conversations with each other, people in the audience do see that. And so that can undermine some of the public trust is making sure that we're being deliberate with what we say and also making sure that we're appropriately filtering if we kind of have an emotional response to something that we're measured in that because sometimes that can, yeah, be the thing that you see in the newspaper and that's not always fun. And that everything is, again, in the public record. Kind of a few different elements that kind of go into is not all experts are right, not all opponents are wrong. And, you know, some things can be a pretty benign project, but still be a bad idea. And so you really have to weigh that big picture in and sometimes make the decisions without all the answers. Now, the last part is really kind of, and this is where consistency, I think, comes in, is you guys do set the stage for a business-friendly reputation for the city or how business-friendly it is. And so it's kind of a measure of, you know, are we consistent? Are we supporting quality or making sure that the expectations are well-known? And so if you hit it, it's there, or are we going to be a guessing game? And then if it's a guessing game, then usually applicants, they view as a less kind of business-friendly or at least consistent place. And so it's just something kind of as you guys work together, it's kind of figuring out, what are we trying to do, where's the points of quality? And that comes back to reaching out to staff as, you know, we don't know kind of what the things you guys are looking for. And so if there's stuff, we can try and make sure that we're consistent with it so the applicant feels prepared. And then usually, we'll try to be able to meet you guys in that direction. And so that really is it for this one. Just wanted to give you guys kind of a highlight, just since we do have a lot of new faces. And I love planning, so I like talking about it. I do want to do kind of a few different study sessions on key issues as well. One is on housing laws. Lot of, what? Yep, there's a lot of- Yep, that is an entire session. We could spend an entire day if you wanted to going into that. But there's a lot of elements that do play into what a city can and cannot do. A lot of what state laws come about is really saying, if your rules say this, you can't be making it up on the dais to say no. And so that's, kind of a key thing is if it meets those requirements, can't be denied. And so having that search into your process. What it doesn't say, though, is that we as a city can also establish those standards. And so if we say, this is what we want to see, and if you meet us there, we're going to make it, you know, you know, you know, perfect, then that's there. But we get to say what that level is. And so I think that's something that's always important. And then another one I would do want to do as well is the California Environmental Quality Act. All the decisions you guys do involve some sort of determination on the CEQA guidelines. And so kind of a key thing that goes into it is, one is CEQA. I personally have a love and hate relationship with having been a CEQA practitioner. But it's, you know, usually an avenue that if someone wants to stall a project, whether or not it's for legitimate reasons, but sometimes not, sometimes it's just to take money from applicants and kind of delay the process, is that CEQA is the way that they go. And so that's kind of the toughest one. There's a lot of case law that makes that law very difficult. And so the thresholds, it's kind of a pain to work with. And so that's something that I want to try and make sure that you guys at least kind of know where those pitfalls are. And then kind of the key thing with CEQA too is you can approve or deny projects with significant impact. CEQA itself isn't about trying to say, hey, if it's not have a bad impact, you can't approve it. It really is just making sure that we're disclosing in that decision what those impacts are. So it's purely a way to provide information that when you're saying, I like the use, but you have an idea of what that complication or the consequences would be of that use is all CEQA is trying to do. And so that's always, I think, a key lesson that tends to get lost. But certainly with the stall techniques that people do, it's kind of a pain. But I do want to try to do a little bit of kind of a refresher for everyone on that just because it's, it can be a pain. And it's something that you guys will run into, especially with some bigger projects where you have a lot of technical studies and, you know, even an environmental impact report, you know, this big hefty document, really, what do I need to look for and what really matters in my decision-making process? And so that's all I have. I wanted to kind of do this and just on the lighter meetings, just you guys all equipped because we're going to have a pretty busy year and want to make sure you guys are all ready to do your guys' best work. I'm excited and certainly tonight was a great night and I think you guys were all coming in prepared, so I'm excited for that. And, yeah. And then, oh. Yep. And so with that, that does conclude my presentation. The only announcement I have is just to follow up on the Planning Commissioners Academy. That was, I have the date. Over here, I do know that Commissioner Higginson had identified that he's interested. I believe you had identified interest, so if you are, let me know and we'll book those. But it is scheduled in March 29th to March 31st. And so as long as I get email confirmation, we'll get it booked and be happy to accommodate that. Usually ends in the kind of mid-morning, they'll have like the closing. So I don't know, I haven't seen the schedule of events, I guess, for that. But usually, it's kind of mid-afternoon so that people can travel back. No, the city will cover it. We don't have, I can't take the entire commission, but certainly those that are kind of the first come, first served, I'm happy to. But we do have in the budget for these trainings because it is helpful, does help allow planning commissioners to interact with other people that are in the same shoes you guys are in. And then also kind of get some key takeaways of issues, challenges, you know, and just kind of, you know, how do you deal with this? Or, you know, in this meeting, you know, we have this issue coming up. How have you guys dealt with it? And so you get to learn from that. And that's one thing that I think, you know, going back to kind of the key takeaways is, you know, trying to learn and, you know, I'm happy to provide and be a resource on planning trends and issues and thoughts on development and how to, you know, at the end of the day, provide progress that's in the best interest of the city. All right. So Donna and David, all right. And that's all I got. Are we ready to adjourn?
Let's adjourn, can I get a motion to adjourn? All right.
I have a second. Motion carries.